Good afternoon, Councilman Mark Irvin, filling in for President Kellis at this time. I'm pumped to be together, we apologize, we got something going on right now at 5:45 PM. This is what the start of the meeting. At this time, I want to ask Councilwoman Gloria Cates to give us the invitation. Councilwoman Cates. Our by the flag of the US.
Father, we will say for today, and we will be so proud to get Lord, for the business of the city, Lord. Father, we ask you to bless us to continue to God and His Father, to do what is right for the citizen of Bolusah, Lord Jesus. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, can I have a little call, uh, secretary Lee?
Okay. Councilwoman Temple, here. President Kellis. Vice President Irwin.
Here.
Councilwoman Douglas.
Here.
Councilwoman Smith.
Here.
Councilwoman Cates, here. And Councilwoman Keys.
All right, this time we got adoption of resolutions, we only have one thing on the agenda. Councilwoman Gloria Cates, you have your resignation.
Thank you. A resolution authorized the title of Becky Hammond, Carr, Reeves, and Ingram firm to serve as our certified public accountant to do the auditing for the year ending December 31st, 2023. And with Becky had said, Ms. Carr, from her firm and from perspective of, of the city of Bolusah, she was elected last year as our auditor, and she will, she has been chosen and agreed to do an engagement letter for 2023. She has, you should have on your package her resume, she has a very impeccable resume, and I do make the motion that we accept this, this adopted resolution as read.
All right, I got it. First, I would say I would shoot from Councilwoman Cates, and then second, from Councilwoman Smith. At this time, we ask for public participation, please come to the microphone, state your name, name and address for the record, please.
Christine Nicholas, 1320 West 10th Street. I have one question. And I'm not, I'm not doubting the integrity and the work of Becky. However, if we entered into a contract with her last year to do the audit, and the audit is not completed from last year, then why wouldn't we hire the same firm? Is it because they are not receiving the information from the city to be able to do the audit? Or is it on, does the fault lie on the firm itself that they're not getting the citizens the information? Because I don't understand why you would hire the same firm if they couldn't complete one year in eight months? How are they going to complete two years of audit?
I would like to also address that with Ms., with Ms. Hammond, Attorney Hammond. She, it's a, it's a triple effect with the information that you had mentioned. There's a PBC list that is entered in to our account, our closeout firm, which is EA, Iver, and Ingram. With Iver, Ingram, the fact we have reading this morning, there's a couple more items that has to get to them so they can get a trial balance, and that information will go forth to Attorney Hammond to go ahead and finish up the, the, the closeout audit for 2022.
So, so why did she just not get the information from the audit, from the financial department and the city? Is that why the audit is not done? Because my understanding, we're not, we're not in compliance now with the state for not having the audit completed after getting to, after we got two extensions to finish the audit. So, which, I mean, I don't understand, we've never not had the audit completed and done it, now we're in.
Right, I can, I can speak to that. So, we have worked day in and day out to gather this information. Remember when I first took office and I stated that computers were wiped and documents were shredded? Well, guess what, chickens are home to roost right now, and we're still looking for certain information. We are working with the closeout firm, Eyes and Amber. I have a meeting with their representative in the morning in Baton Rouge to figure out what are the last few things we need. Once they get what they, finish getting what they need, and it's a lot of things on that list that we just can't find. We talked to the state auditors, they communicated that at this point, you can't find it. It's time to start cutting out losses. So, it's, it's not a lack of effort, or oh, this is the first time the city has been noncompliant. This is the first time the mayor didn't receive the transition. So, everything that I brought to you all when I first took office, we're feeling the effects of.
Well, it's my understanding though, Mayor, that you didn't receive the transition because you chose to not have the transition. My understanding that the people that were.
My understanding is off, and I think we see it.
The people in the financial department were locked out of the city.
She is out.
They were locked out of the city, so they were not able to do a transition.
Ms., Chris, I would just like to add to it, it's partial because Ms. Becky Hammond was praying and submitted for the, the city of Bolusah for as the judge's administration, Mr. Duke, everything was submitted timely and on time, and everything came back fine and accredited perfectly, I would say a score of an eight. Ms. Becky is here, she can elaborate more, so we're just not totally compliant as the city because when it comes to the judge's administration office and his department, everything was submitted in a timely manner, and everything is okay.
So, it's the issue of the state?
It is.
Not your information from the fiscal department?
Yes, ma'am, we're not trying to have anything personal, because it's just, we're just here to be transparent. And yes, ma'am, but we are working on it, the mayor has just explained his situation, and we are trying to commit to compliance with.
Because we have two people in the fiscal department, where we have one person in there with the previous administration. I know the mayor likes to bring out the previous administration.
Well, we really can't focus on the previous because right now we've dealt the course that we have, and we're just trying to move forward, stay as fast. So, I'm, I'm not trying to be smart or rude in any kind of way, you know, previous is previous. We're just trying to move on, as far as the future goes. And there is some, some gaps and some things that are missing, but we are trying to work this, which is new to, to men that was told.
Sorry, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
And I would like to add, and that's been recommended, although we are on the noncompliance list, and that's what we're trying to fix that, but we are recommended to move on into 2023 closeout because that time is really, is secret upon us, you know. As I mentioned, we did have a meeting this morning with, let's say, auditors, as well as the finance committee, and Ms. Brown, our, our finance director, and we went over exactly what else is needed. And the, the finance committee, I can say as chair of the finance committee, we're doing everything that we can to get everything in order. In fact, the council only, the council, they only needed a surplus list that was from August of 16, 2022. And I did find that in my records, and I have submitted that, so that's something that we can wipe off the list. But as far as Ms. Hammond, we're hoping to talk her to the podium, but there's no more public participation, so that she can speak on the matter and her credentials as well.
Yeah, because that, what, what that is, is about the bookkeeping part has to be done first, that handed off to Ms. Hammond, and she has not received the bookkeeping part from Eyes and Amber. There are numerous documents that the administration has tried to attempt to retrieve, and we did get progress of it this morning, and there are numerous documents that they still can't find. Eyes and Amber I'm talking about, the, the bookkeeping part of it. So, the thing is that, and that's just what's causing the delay of the 2023 audit at this time.
Yes, and also Ms. Hammond will probably speak. If in fact those documents cannot be found, there is a process in place with declarations, and she can speak on that a little bit more, so that we can, so that we can.
Go ahead, Ms. Lord, about the location, name and address for the record.
Joe Mellow, 532 Offense Street. I'm glad she said that she gonna let this, what's her name, is Hammond, this company speak. My concerns, of all my history, me being counted to the council meetings all down through the years, I never heard of a, of a transition, whoever, last mayor, whoever take the documents and computers and destroy that keep the new administration finding out. And to me, maybe you wonder, what did she, who, whatever did, what they have to hide on that? And I think this mayor been working very hard to try to bring things up to the city frame of the day, and get things going, and outside influence that's calling the city council and causing problems is what the problem is. And I don't mind saying it, since I seen this on Facebook, where the Genco's got a big X rock on the radar of the mayor, and I'm hoping I'm speaking at the right time. They called me and they didn't get him a call with the mayor, and since he can't have his weight, he wants to cry out today, and he started turning back, man, this is not fair. And the public need to be aware of this and wake up, and it's important to the city council, the city council support the mayor, and that us get this job, your Bolusah up and going, because I'm so sick of what's going on in Bolusah. And it's ridiculous, all this racial, this hate going toward the city council, and the mayor just standing. But I'm a person, come back and public participation, and then the, we want to hear from the answer. Oh, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, and can we just stay on topic? This is a special call meeting, we are, we are out here by the six sense, by you all. To hear what you have to say, but right now we need to really, like, stay on topic, let's not generate, generate off the topic for discussion. We're here to conduct business, so we're trying to.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
It's okay, Mr. Joe, we understand, because they want, we definitely want to hear what you have to say. And when it's time for public participation, if they were liable, if the market were liable, we definitely need to hear that. But right now, we're just trying to stick to the topic and stay on topic.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
John McMahon, 222 Germany Street. Oh, I just have a couple questions. Do we have a publicly accessible list, in regards to closing out the previous audit so we can begin the new one fresh? Do we have a publicly accessible list of documents that are currently missing, and what they may or may not pertain to? Because, as I'm aware, and many of y'all are aware, stuff might get, like, thrown in a huge beer in offices. Things may happen. I never attribute to maliciousness what could be explained by ignorance, so sometimes things happen.
Right.
But, there's a chance that somebody may have put in a public record request. There's a chance that somebody out there in the public might have a copy of one of these financial documents. Do we have any way, or any list of what documents are still pending? So that way we can put that out, and just do a call for those documents should it might have.
We have a list, and anybody is welcome to the list.
Okay, well, I, I'd be happy to stop by and grab one of those. Stepping further into that, while I try to. Uh, stepping further into that, while I try to attribute nothing to maliciousness that can be explained with ignorance, at the same time, should one of these documents come to light and it leads to any type of intentional destruction of these documents by a member of the prior administration or under their employee? If we wind up not being able to produce these documents until after this pending audit closes, is there a statute of limitations for accountability for what may happen after that?
I would like to address that the, the listing that, that's gathering, that PDC list that goes to E A, Amber, and Iver, as I mentioned, will go to Ms. Hammond, and then Ms. Hammond will close out everything. Uh, then that information will go to the legislative auditors. The legislative auditors will go through, uh, her findings, will find two phone, and at that point, a decision would be made as you mentioned, if anything's been, uh, captured with or, they will wait that time to see.
I mean, it's not, it's not a, because per the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, uh, let's say, auditors finding, there wasn't proper access to dedicated ones. I mean, that, that's in black and white. That's part, that's part of the city record. It happened. I'm just saying, if we find that there's more.
I'm sorry, what you're saying.
So, it didn't guide like this is.
There was improper access to dedicated ones back then, whenever we had our financial audit or the financial order came in.
No, it did, it did work, yes.
Yeah. So, should something else, or should any documents come to light that shows that that pattern persisted after he came and recommended corrective action? Will there be accountability for people who persist, persisted to do what they wanted to do and did not act in the best interest of our city? If an individual is found to have intentionally deleted or destroyed documents?
Well, as I said, the decision, uh, from my experience, would be up to the legislative auditor. If, if, if there is anything intentional or criminal or what have you, they will pass on to, uh, folks in, such as the, the district attorney office or the legislative auditors, not legislative auditors, but the attorney general's office, uh, for them to take action, if you, they take action.
That was my concern, just making sure that there's going to be, one, clear and concise records and then accountability should have been.
Within the twenty twenty-two.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that if we close it out, they're not going to escape accountability. By this closing, thank you.
But I believe it will be because that's like now pieces in office, like deals in office, this is not, this is in office, basically. Mr. May, you don't elaborate on that before he has a seat, um, for accountability purposes.
And Councilwoman Case did a great job of explaining it. I'm not aware of any statute of limitations.
Okay.
I wrote the question down, so when I call to you.
Yeah. Okay. And if the auditors do find some sort of inconsistency or a pattern of behavior that continue to persist on legislative orders and, uh, interactions here in the city, will the city take a stance on whether or not they'll actually enforce all the capital people in the face? Or is that asking a little bit too much for I?
That's a district attorney question.
That's a district attorney question. I got it. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, I, Mrs. Glass, nineteen fifteen, Los Angeles, LA. Um, are the copiers and the computers still in, in the building from?
Last.
Last.
Last graduation. Uh, I think there's the, uh, Mr.
They're still in my office, yes.
Those copiers and those computers, every time you print something, it keeps a copy of whatever you print. I worked for the state thirty years, and it kept a copy of everything that was printed from my files. And it would tell you who printed it because they had to have a code. So, those copiers and those printers have a copy of everything, everything that has been printed. So, uh, you can easily go back and pull it up and, and get you a copy because, uh, they can check the files. Because everything on that copy machine and everything on that printer, on that computer, it is there. It is there. They keep a copy of everything. I don't care who printed it, it is there. So, uh, unless somebody totally destroyed the computer and the, and the copy machine, but everything is, is there on the, on the printer and in the, and in the computer is there. So, I'm just, y'all need to get a big issue, go back and check. Get you, somebody to come in here and pull it all out of there because they can do it. That's what I ask.
Thank you. Thank you.
Please state your name.
Stand in the face. Fifteen thirty-seven North Royal Street, Bucolusa, Louisiana. Uh, to Honorable Mayor, to Mr. Vice President, to the board members, I rose to address a concern that came to me concerning a recall that's been enacted, and I wanted to ask a question.
We're here to discuss.
Well, that's another question. My question would be, there be another time to the person?
Yes, sir. Yes, and our meeting will be our regular plan. This is a special call council meeting to discuss only this agenda. That's it. And if you have any questions, please watch your call, we'll be glad to answer.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, girl. Nineteen thirty-one, deep in place. Uh, I think we need to get some accountability for the twenty-two budget and make these people accountable for all this stuff they destroyed.
Thank you.
And, uh, and everything, anything else can be found that was, did deliver, it can be handled on. Because we talking about the twenty-three budget, like, this, this twenty-three budget, just, just, yeah, so you been up a year old, and we up here rocking and going on about the twenty-three budget, but ain't nobody saying that about the twenty-two budget.
Thank you.
This time, let's get things in order. Let's get things in order and, 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 and take care of business like we put you all in office to take care of business. Well, I see you didn't know you said you all not handling business right. And, uh, I've been running you mean a long time, and I'm sick of business not being handled right. And I'm not talking about this new administration, I'm talking about the previous administration. So, don't let this slide get off the hook because if y'all do, I think I might file suit against you all. Thank you.
I would like, I would like to address that, Mr. Faith, and I know we have to move on. Uh, yes, the twenty twenty-two audit, yes, definitely, it has to be on our list to resolve. Uh, the, the, uh, the deadline for twenty twenty-two, uh, closeout was January thirty-first, and then we discovered February first to be on noncompliance list. Uh, being on that noncompliance list, that means a lot, uh, to the city. We can't get any grants coming in, uh, state grants, federal grants that follow through the state grants. We can't, uh, uh, move forward with, with any type of, uh, some of our HB two bills for some of the projects that we have in place. You heard the mayor mention that he'll be meeting tomorrow. Hopefully, we can resolve this. Uh, I did mention this morning during our meeting about a possibility of going through the Tyler system, which is a, a computer system, uh, that may, we can maybe go in to retrieve some of those documents as Ms. uh, Ms. Glass had mentioned. But Tyler is in the actual computer system, uh, to go into. We looking at all types of avenues of twenty twenty-two. It's not that, it's not that, uh, we're looking over believing twenty twenty-two, uh, closeout and why it wasn't closed out properly. Bucolusa has never been on a noncompliance list. I look back twenty years or so, we have never been on a noncompliance list. So, it's, it's not, uh, it's not that we are, um, uh, hiding anything as Councilwoman Smith said, we are looking into it. It's that we have to have this agreement letter in to the legislative auditors for the twenty twenty-three closeout, and that's not easy to say if they're gonna accept it. But we have to have it in before February twenty-ninth, and that's why we're here today for a special meeting. Our next meeting is technically March fifth. But no, we, we are, we are been looking, we are looking into the twenty twenty-two closeout and the calls of the twenty twenty-two closeout. Uh, as far, we going back as far as this morning during our meeting, and with the administrator left in twenty twenty-one, having to look up some information that may have affected the twenty twenty-two closeout. But I assure you, Mr. Faith, uh, this is on our list, this is on our, our list because, uh, but this particular noncompliance list also affects our, our, uh, our bonding. Uh, we can't get any law, you know, it's, it's, it's big. I had a whole, and we were not going to discuss this tonight, but I, I was going to discuss it last, uh, Tuesday night, but fortunately, we didn't have a meeting. But I had a whole list of, of consequences of being on a noncompliance list for our city.
Mr. Keith, would you please state your name?
My name is Morgan Austin.
Morgan Austin.
I'm resident of Southern, uh, ever since now, having a vote on three thousand. Uh, in the voting chair process, I'd like to know who the, who was the count at the time? Because the count usually has to sign off before it goes to the legislative audit. Now, we talking about the twenty-two.
What's that?
And the twenty-three budget. What we need to go back from years back and leave it all up.
Till, till twenty.
And you see something that out of place in that twenty-two, but why is it missing when it's in all the other budgets? And so, I, I remember when, uh, uh, I was on the council, kind of, the lady, Richard Seals was out, he did, and he would not sign off on anything for until the legislative auditors, oh, and it was, the things weren't in place. So, uh, you know, I, you know, we, we writing about the twenty-three, like Smith said, this administration took off, and the twenty-two wasn't, hadn't been submitted.
Right.
So, uh, we didn't look at it like that.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going, I'm going to ask Ms. Hammond to come forward, and we're going to have to, uh, I actually brought the form. So, uh, that, before y'all go any further, I won't break out to speed. We were on physical administration up until summer of twenty twenty-one. So, there was a physical administrator signed off the state of Louisiana down here because of things that happened in nineteen eighty-four, and then all of a sudden, state law changed in twenty fourteen, and they came up with a physical mayor administrator laws and everything else, over the covers retirement system, which had been outbalanced for a long time. Previous major, uh, mayors, if you remember, they would go back to C D Verger and then come over to Toy Taylor. So, somewhere starting about that time in nineteen eighty-four, I was ten years old, that's where the covers were talking about outbalance. And then he came up with a plan, and y'all, and the citizens of Bucolusa, put it on rededication facts and specific covers retirement system. And that's why he was down there. Now, today, twenty twenty-two, only thing is, the administration is trying to get together documents that they cannot find, and that's what they're, they're working frankly to get that from Izner Amber, which is doing the bookkeeping, to hand it off to Ms. Becky Hammond. Ms. Hammond has answered all our questions, and that's the administration and us, whenever we had questions. She's on hands on the deck right now to take that twenty-two, as soon as Izner Amber finishes it, she's going to take care of that and get us back in compliance, get us on compliance list. That's here. Once it's submitted to the L L F, Louisiana Legislature Auditors, and then Shaisha and them immediately will have to start working on, Mr. Franklin, Shaisha Franklin, has to start working on the twenty-three, uh, uh, audit. And that's why we're putting our, there, we're doing our part as a council tonight because she has to, by state law, has had to sign up February twenty-nine, she has to sign engagement letter, and that will keep this thing moving. They don't have the documents most likely for twenty-three because they were here, the new administration. So, that should run much smoother than the twenty. Your head is sound.
And that is the purpose why I'm here tonight. I had advised the council, um, to go ahead and engage for twenty twenty-three. So, because one of the requirements for giving an extension of time to file your financial report is that you have to engage your auditor timing. And so, given the situation and the fact that, um, we're still working on twenty twenty-two diligently, trying to get that finished up, uh, I believe we are getting close to that and hopeful that we'll be able to, to start our work soon. Uh, but with that comes, you know, they have to close out twenty twenty-three as well. And so, the likelihood that we're going to be able to turn that around and body it by the, the required deadline of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four is, is pretty unlikely. So, what that means is we need to be able to file for an extension. If you haven't engaged your auditor, you can't file for an extension. So, this is, you know, we're here to, to try to protect the city, to give them time to breathe because after all, we're all humans, we need a chance to not have so much pressure on us that we, you know, so we're trying to, to make sure that you all have the time that you need to be able to do this right. And I think that's what we all want, that's why this is taking a little longer is because everybody involved wants to do it right. And, um, you know, and we are at the stage where if we can't find the information, then we will be able to, um, to move forward in our audit with issuing some kind of different opinion, either a disclaimer or, um, an adverse opinion, depending on the circumstances, and that will all be outlined in the report, depending on where we land. And ultimately, it would be what it is, and we'll, we'll work with you on that, um, and we'll move forward together.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you. We'll follow this time.
Go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
Ms. Hammond. This was what she wants to see.
Please state your name and record for the record so the microphone.
I thought I ran a lot over right now. Okay. I'm sorry to tell you this again, the covers going to stand up, you will get that. But Ms. Hammond, uh, the last audit that you were in, it's a not groundable problem. We need you, if you, for instance, we did all this stuff straight out, what's going to happen with the match for, uh, the mayor said he had his computer, she made it one on the, uh, city, and I know some of the records for it, it wasn't shredded, you can't find that. So, after the mayor took off, then they want to file reports, one that's one here, you know, find, uh, find enough to get some kind of, because he can have it all been shredded. It's also something a lot of the country's running out. So, what's going to happen to the last, uh, audit, you know, that, uh, last administration did provide and what?
Anything that we find, it's within the scope of our audit, we will report in our audit. That information will then be reviewed by the legislative auditor, and they deem that it is more, um, that they need to elevate to the district attorney and anyone else at the, the state level, and they will do that, um, you know, depending on, on what we find and, and the facts and circumstances that, you know, we have evidence for. So, um, and I actually would like to, to, to add on to that as well. You know, we are doing this so that the city can, can be able to get their extensions, but we are also trying to engage the court. We expect to be able to complete the court's audits before the June thirtieth deadline for the twenty twenty-three audit and get them issued, uh, you know, we don't expect any issues with that, uh, at all. So, um, that's also, you know, we want to move forward with them as well, so at least part of your, your engagements are issued, and I think that sends a good message to the legislative auditor, you know, that's, we're, we're moving forward.
All right, Ms. Hammond, I hope I asked you, when this break, let's do this quickly, we're about to open this forum. Uh, right now, we're in safe, coming to my conversation, actually, nine minutes.
John McMahon, two O two Derby Street. Uh, I recommend you on the hardware, you got it. Uh, is this just a traditional external audit? Or is, okay. Uh, in that case, once this audit has been completed and we are back in compliance, um, in regards to your comment that the whole reason for our, uh, finite, uh, the legislative auditor coming down was in covers, uh, and covers was the only account that caused that, um, I recommend that you go back and look at the financial auditors report and read the various, uh, sliding funds. Um, I recommend that you go back and look at the financial auditors report and read the various, uh, sliding funds that were affected. It's not just covers. So there, there's more that's been going on.
That's the big.
Because of that, I would recommend that because of the misrepresentation that's happening on our council, I would recommend that after Ms. Hammond has done the hard work of getting us back into compliance, that the city or someone from the city request a forensic audit of these documents because there's still some of this, misrepresentation going on, uh, misinformation going on.
I would like to address that, uh, Ms. McMahon, uh, during our, our financing that and discussed this morning, the fact of a possible, uh, forensic, uh, auditor. In fact, I talked with Shannon about it. She has one within her firm and we may, we may possibly re-explain that as well, but they can go back and they can pull up any information, uh, like a paper trail, uh, if all possible. And, uh, uh, she mentioned about the court and Judge, Judge Duke is here. And Judge Duke did give us a, um, a finding, um, dis- distribution between twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. And, uh, they did very well in bringing in the funds, the court. And I was going to ask after you, I know we got a little quickly, I was saying, after you, if Judge Duke has any, um, any comments.
All right, Judge Duke will be the last public speaker and if you got any questions, Ms. Hammond, this is the time I ask.
Thank you everyone. Uh, David Duke, uh, state court judge. And as Ms. Hammond's.
State attorney.
Oh, uh, three fourteen Mississippi Avenue.
Thank you.
So, uh, at the beginning of last year, the mayor approached and said, uh, after looking at some of the bills from twenty twenty-two, to have a combined audit with one engagement, uh, the firm chosen last year was Carl Rigs and, and, uh, partner there and Ms. Hammond was, uh, assigned to us. So at one point, it, it, it made me nervous that I'm losing control over that ability to, to handle the court's business myself. But at the same time, uh, the court is on a very shoestring budget. We finished the end of the year with around fifteen hundred dollars in deposit and so that's a close of the call kind of thing. So we helped the court this year tremendously and we ended up with, uh, seven thousand, seventy-five hundred dollars at the year-end balance. So we're in the right direction. I'm trying to get us back on track. During this year, we were also able to return to the city through the fines, an increase of, uh, fifty-four percent increase from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, uh, for the fines. And in total for the city, we can increase thirty-two percent. We went from forty-nine thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars to the city in twenty twenty-two. And then this year we're able to return, uh, through the fines and collections, sixty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars. All that to say that that little increase might give you some comfort to keep them in one contract and two engagements, which is two reports. That's what that means. So legislative auditor gets a report from the court and gets a report from the city. Um, and I thought that it, I was skeptical last year. It was, they're an excellent firm to work with. They have the technology that allows us to provide the information to them electronically. We're not printing out a ton of documents, sitting here waiting for them to walk in and review them. We submit them an upload through a, a system that I've never used before called Smart Sheets. Uh, it allows them to put comments on it, post a couple of comments on it, and so it's a very easy transfer. And then of course, all those documents that we add in Smart Sheets, we're keeping. So when they come on site and want to verify, they were able to do that and see the actual record themselves. So our audit went very smoothly. It was issued and received by November thirtieth. We, we complied with that second, second extension, third, third student?
Second.
Second extension.
No, first, that was the first.
Third, yeah, third. So we are, uh, our books for twenty twenty-three are closed. We stand ready to be audited for twenty twenty-three. What do you think is different from the court and the city? Internally, we don't engage an external accountant. So, uh, our clerk, Tommy DeLeon, closes our books monthly and then closes the year for us. We only have four accounts, um, that being the bonds that we take in for people who are arrested and you hold that money in trust until their case is handled. We take in civil bond fees for people who are suing and for evictions or small claims. We take in court fines for people who have been assessed fines due to the court. And then, uh, the fourth is funds due to the court, which we call the judicial expense fund. And those funds transfer into J E from either the civil or the criminal. Uh, so while the court takes in all this money, the court's entitled to thirty dollars for every charge. So that's what the court gets to keep and use for its operation, hence the sho-. So while numbers look huge, uh, the shoestring budget is what we end up with. So I would encourage the council, please keep us as we were last year. This is great help to the court. I know that finances are tough for the city. Uh, I will say this, politically small P. If people are looking at Baton Rouge, it looks like one set of eyes is looking all over Bogalusa into the accounting and that's got to be a good thing because if, if there's one accountant looking at both sides of the house and then they, there's some credibility that, that one side's done, the other side's on its way and it gives the impression that we are working in Bogalusa. If you're sitting in Baton Rouge at some office, that having one auditor doing one engagement of two reports, that, uh, nothing's going to get by that. So that's, it's, I hope that resonates with you because I believe that it does with us and, uh, I can speak with the people that I've dealt with, the car rigs that were hand, they were hands-on, available. And when we got started, it was a smooth process. So, uh, as she's indicated, we're ready for the twenty-three when they're ready for us. And hopefully we'll meet that deadline, which shows again to people in Baton Rouge who are looking over our shoulders that we are attempting where we can to stay on track. Because if we get behind everywhere, then we're in trouble on each of the cases. So thank you. I appreciate you answering your questions.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Temples?
Aye.
President Kellis? Vice President Irwin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kate?
Aye.
Councilwoman Keys?
Okay, the motion carries. At this time, I want to just tell you that, uh, we are calling, come to my call. We are calling another special call visit, uh, special council meeting for Monday night, Monday night, February the twenty-sixth at five-thirty. This will be for the discussion of the, um, for the Bowls Architects LLC. Uh, we do have a deadline. Uh, the mayor has informed us of February the twenty-eighth. So to give him his time to submit his paperwork for that particular project, uh, we are, will have to call special council meeting. Only that subject will be discussed that night. Uh, our regular special, uh, our regular council meeting, for regular council meeting will be on, uh, continuously March the fifth at five-thirty P M. So at this time, our journalists meeting and y'all good night.